Good evening, everybody, and welcome to a special edition of War Chat TV. This is a War Chat Town Hall with special guest FSU Chairman of the Board, Peter Collins. He'll be along in just a moment. I'm joined right now by Managing Editor of WarChat.com. He's Ira Schofeld. My name is Tom Lang, and we are convening on the Monday of a game week here on War Chat TV. Ira, how's it going this evening?
Good, as if there wasn't enough going on. We figured we'd have Peter Collins come on and talk a little FSU athletics with us.
It's made headlines before this particular town hall. We'll see what's in store for us tonight over the next hour. I should point out before we get started tonight, Seminole Boosters, you see that donation link at the bottom of the screen, a QR code. You'll see that throughout the program tonight in case you wish to make a one-time donation or recurring one. They like those too at Seminole Boosters. The QR code will link you directly to that particular page. Tonight's format, Ira, it's going to be very familiar to these that we've done in the past, which will start with a one-on-one conversation with you and tonight's special guest, Peter Collins, FSU Chairman of the Board. That will go for about 15 to 20 minutes, maybe a little bit longer if the conversation holds. And then we're going to give way to the interactive portion of tonight's Town Hall program, which is your questions if you're watching right now on War Chat TV. So provide questions in the chat. I know there's probably an obvious one or two that are out there. We'll see, we'll do our best to get as much information as we can for you, but please file those away. We'll be looking at those in the chat. Anything else, Ira, that you wish to preview before we bring on the man of the hour?
No, I'm ready to get going.
All right, well, without further ado, here he is. He is the Chairman of the Board at Florida State's Board of Trustees, Peter Collins. Welcome to the program tonight, Chair Collins. How are you?
I'm great. How are you guys?
Awesome. Thanks for coming on.
Get ready to watch some football finally. This will be nice to get some new data for the season, won't it, on Saturday afternoon?
It's been a couple of years since we did this. Lots happened in a couple of years.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, did you watch much football this past weekend?
I did not watch any football this last weekend.
Wow.
I've been doing a lot of traveling and I was actually catching up. I was in the office all day Saturday and been gone a lot. So one of my daughters is home and so I spent time with my wife and my, one of my daughters this weekend and it was, it was great. It was a nice quiet weekend, but I watched a lot of golf, but I didn't watch any football.
Good for Tommy Fleetwood. He got it off the schneid, man.
Man, you feel for that guy, you know, just like Rory winning the Masters. You've, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a golf nut. So it was great watching Rory win the Masters and it was great watching Tommy yesterday.
Yeah, nice little $10 million get off the schneid moment for Tommy Fleetwood.
Yeah, I mean, if you're gonna win one, if you're gonna win one, that's the one you want.
No doubt, no doubt about that. And, you know, in this world that now we're navigating here in college sports, college athletics, big checks are a big part of, of the talking points. And I'm just wondering, as you said, Chair Collins, the last year, year and a half, there's been a whole lot that's happened. As much as you're willing to share, and then I'll step aside for you in your conversation with Ira, about what your life has been like as the Chairman of the Florida State Board of Trustees and what the ride has been like that everybody knows of which I'm speaking, as much as you're willing to share about what that's been like and if a memoir is coming at any point in the future after your tenure's over.
My, my wife write, my wife might write a memoir because she's been like, you know, right there at every 11 o'clock phone call, but no memoir for me. It's, obviously, it's, it's been interesting and I feel really good, you know, as I said a couple of years ago, I feel really good where we're going and I feel really good where we are today. And it's, you know, it's, I feel, I feel good for what we did. A lot of people don't understand the public nature in which we did it and that sort of bothers me like, you know, they're troublemakers or, you know, why are they doing this all so publicly? And what a lot of people don't realize is that we have, in Florida, we have a unique law called the Sunshine Law. Every Board of Trustees meeting has to be public and we can't, trustees can't have conversations with each other unless it's in a public meeting. And it's, you know, it's tough to run a railroad that way, but that's what we have to do. And so when people ask me, you know, why was it so public? It's like, well, I would have preferred it wasn't so public, but we had no choice. And so, but I feel really good about where we ended up. I feel really good about where the ACC is today. I think the ACC, you know, created the mold for unequal revenue distribution. I think you'll see that come in the future, maybe in some other conferences. It took a lot of guts. It took a lot of guts on a lot of people's parts to do it, but I think it was the right thing to do. And I think the outcome that we got at the end of it was good for Florida State, but it was good for the ACC. And I think that that's why ultimately the ACC agreed to it. You know, as I said before, it's, it's, you know, things have been the same for so long that it's, that it's tough to change sometimes. And I think through the whole effort and through the whole process, you know, a lot of people came around and realized that, hey, for the future, this is the right thing to do and for the conference, it is the right thing to do. And I feel really good about where we are and I felt, I feel good about the process and what we did. If there's one regret I have, like I said, it's, it's sort of like the, the very public nature in which we did it, but we really had no choice. And so to, to anyone we might have offended in that process, you know, apologies, but, you know, you're gonna have to sort of take it up with the Florida Legislature.
We, and we're gonna touch on a lot of different topics tonight. We're gonna talk about the renovations to Doak, other facility updates, upgrades that are going on, the new football facility, the revenue sharing that's now taking place around college athletics where student athletes can split about $20 million a year from their school if the school opts into this, which of course Florida State is. So there's a lot of things we're gonna get to, but just following up on that real quick. So I think there were some misunderstandings maybe of what the goal was of the lawsuits and we don't have to go relitigate all this, but in the, especially if there's any billable hours involved, we don't need to, we don't, you don't need any more of those. But, 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 you know, I think there was, the perception was that the lawsuit was really about first and foremost, getting out of the ACC as soon as possible, like that that was the number one goal. But really, the two big things you guys got out of it that is part of the settlement is the change in revenue sharing to where, which you just mentioned, to where the schools that may bring in the most money through television ratings are gonna be the ones that reap the biggest rewards. And there's been estimates out there, it could be 15 or 20 million dollars more a year if you're one of those schools like Florida State or Clemson that's bringing in the big TV ratings. And then the other one is that there is actually like a, there is a plan for if schools have to leave the ACC or want to leave the ACC, there is a plan. Like I don't, I don't think a lot of people realized that there was no plan before, like there, it was, the perception was you couldn't leave. It was ironclad, you just couldn't leave. So that was the other big thing that came out of it that now there is, if you want to leave, it's gonna cost you a lot of money, but it's, it's an option. Were those, you know, going into it, did you think that that may be a resolution through settlement or, and how difficult was it to take the step, as Tom asked you, because it's a pretty bold move. Not a lot of schools have done this, not a lot of, Florida State and Clemson both filed lawsuits against the ACC. You know, I guess you said you were pleased with it. Is this solving the big problems you had going into it?
Well, I think what it does is it focuses Florida State and it focuses all the teams in the ACC on being really good at the revenue producing sports and investing in those revenue producing sports. And so from that standpoint, I think it's a good win for the conference and I think it's a, it's a good win for, for each team. And I would say that, you know, we had been talking about unequal revenue distribution and success initiatives and, and all of that with the ACC for some time. But again, I don't want to underestimate or I don't want to not recognize how difficult it is to change decades-long thinking and operations. And so for the conference to be able to do that and over, and overcome that thinking is a major victory. It's not a major victory just for Florida State, it's a major victory for the conference. And so again, I'm really happy where we ended up and I think the conference and I think the commissioner is very happy with where we ended up. And everybody, everybody should be incentivized to invest. Everybody should be incentivized to get better and everybody should be incentivized to, to be as successful as they can. And I think that what we have today is pretty unique, certainly among the Power Four in that regard. And I think it was really good.
Yeah, just to follow up for the people that maybe are watching this that haven't followed every step of the way, and I'm not, I don't want to put words into your mouth and I also don't want to ask you to disparage any of your colleagues in, in the ACC, but you know, the, the perception has been that some schools invested heavily in maybe basketball or invested heavily in baseball. And back in the day, basketball was really the big revenue generator for the ACC. And going back to John Swafford and then also Jim Phillips, they've been really pushing a lot of the other schools in the ACC to invest more into football to make the product overall better. So that's, if, that's kind of where this is all going. And Jim Phillips, every public speaking, he gets a lot of grief from a lot of people on our website and a lot of fans in the FSU community, but every time he does speak publicly, he talks about the importance of all of these schools investing heavily into, into football. You, this thing didn't, another topic that didn't get as much press, but I think was very important for, for Florida State. You guys got approval from the Board of Governors to, all the state schools in Florida now have approval from the Board of Governors to tap into auxiliary funds that are, it's basically, and you can speak to this, but money that you guys collect from parking fees and different things, concessions, things like that, that money can now be used for some athletic purposes. And the plan is to use that money to help fund revenue sharing, which is how the student athletes are gonna be able to take, you know, in $20 million a year, 20 and a half million dollars a year through this revenue sharing plan. That was also kind of uncharted territory because Florida State's have, I mean, how, I don't know, I can't, I'm not sure how long the state of Florida's had this policy, but in the past, you couldn't take any money from the university and put it into athletics. This was a, a pretty groundbreaking strategy, but it kind of puts you on a level playing field with other states as well. So I don't know if you could talk about that a little bit?
Sure. You know, Florida's, I don't want to say totally unique, but somewhat unique in that, you know, we have this board of, not, it's not a statutory thing, it's a Board of Governors regulation that says that athletics has to be self-sufficient. And in their mind, self-sufficient means the university can't put any money into athletics. And so, you know, one thing I'll say out of this effort, and I've seen some of the comments and I've talked to a lot of people, we didn't raise one student fee, we didn't raise tuition, we didn't raise the athletic fee, we didn't, it's not costing the students any more money and the students are not losing any resources that they would have otherwise had by doing this. So that's the most important part. We do have a lot of auxiliaries that aren't state-funded. You know, there's probably 15 different sources and we have that money available to us. And if it's not going to affect students and if it's not going to affect their experience and it's not going to cost them more money or the state more money, my argument was we need a bridge, right? There's a lot of other states that have been making a lot of changes in their, in their legislatures about what they can do. There's a lot of universities and schools that have been raising fees, athletic fees by millions of dollars and bringing in many millions more through that. And so it's tough to compete if you can't do that, if you've got one tie, one arm tied behind your back. And so my argument to the Board of Governors on this, and I was thankful that the other Boards of Trustees and the other universities sort of let Florida State lead on this. My argument was give us a bridge to, you know, you can't just overnight, the boosters are doing an amazing job of raising funds for the university, but it's hard to raise 22 and a half million dollars overnight. And so give us a bridge, give us three or four years, excuse me, give us three or four years of allowing us to do this and let us build a bridge to be, being self-sufficient again with this new change. And the Board of Governors recognized that to their credit and it helps every university in the state. It doesn't just help, you know, Florida State, it helps Florida, USF, FAU, it helps everybody to, to be able to do this. And, you know, some universities won't spend as much as we are because some universities aren't in, in Florida anyway, aren't in the Power Four and they aren't gonna spend to the cap. But if you want to compete and if you want to compete at the level we want to compete at, you're gonna have to spend at the cap. And so we worked really hard, probably took, I don't know, six to nine months to get it done, but we got it done and it's, it's a good thing for Florida State and it's a good thing for every university in the state. And again, we didn't affect the student experience 1%.
Yeah, and to give a little more background, and I probably should have said this in the lead up to the question, so for people that weren't paying attention, I'm sure a lot of people that are watching this were, but basically we didn't know until July, June, July, whether or not the revenue sharing, the house settlement was even going to be approved, right? So there was a question of whether or not this was even going to happen, then it gets approved and then all these schools want to have that money available right away because you want to compete and recruit the best roster you can recruit in.
Yeah, you've got to start signing contracts July 1 for the, for the next year. And so it's tough to be able to do those contracts if you don't know whether you have the money or not.
Right.
And, you know, a lot of people are still confused between, between revenue sharing and NIL.
Right.
You know, we're not, this is a, this is a revenue sharing, this 22 and a half million dollars, two of it goes to former players. So you, it's really 20.5 million dollars going forward for future players that you're sharing part of your revenue. And, you know, if you're, our budget this year is gonna be over 210 million dollars in athletics. And if you're gonna take 10% of that budget and you're gonna pay X number of athletes, where do you get that money from? And you've seen a lot of universities have to cut a lot of programs, cut a lot of sports, a lot of sports or now club sports at a lot of other universities and, and we certainly didn't want to do that. That was a last resort, right? Because we still want to compete in football and, and basketball and everything. But if you're taking 20.5 of your revenue and you're sharing it with, you know, a, a small group of people, where do you get that money? And it really was right down to the wire when the, when the judge affirmed the ruling. And so we had very little time. Thankfully, we had been working with the, with the Board of Governors and letting them know that this was coming and we had some hearings on it at the Board of Governors that you probably saw or watched. We had the NCAA come down and testify on the revenue sharing, but there's still a lot of people that just don't understand the difference between NIL and revenue sharing. NIL is totally separate from revenue sharing. And, and so, anyway, you're right, we had very little time to react.
On that note, so you have the revenue sharing in place. There's a lot of hope right now, I think, well, there's a lot, there's some people have a lot of hope, some people don't have a lot of hope about how this is all gonna play out. One of the big benefits, I know you've talked about this, some Michael Alford, FSU's Athletic Director, has talked about it several times as well, that there's a hope that now that revenue sharing is in effect and there's gonna be theoretically more guidelines about what schools can do in terms of offering money to, to athletes and, and if they are gonna have NIL deals in the new world, they're gonna have to be very structured, very, they're gonna have to meet certain guidelines to where it's not just offering blank checks to recruits to come, to come to their school. There seems to be, there has been different times where I felt like even Mr. Alford was optimistic, some other times maybe not as optimistic. What, what's your general feeling?
Depends on the time of day and the day of the week.
That's what I was gonna ask you. You talk to a lot of people in this world, because that, I feel like that has to, the thing I've tried to tell some people, it's not only Florida State that wants a level playing field, it's a lot of these schools. And so it feels like there is an appetite to get some structure and get things kind of under wraps, but is it possible? What are your thoughts?
First of all, you're right. I, I think all the schools want it. Some rules and some structure. I like having a salary cap, if you will.
Maybe, maybe some schools in oil-producing states may see it differently, but I guess.
Yeah, you know, that's what we don't want college football to become, right? Where there's 10 schools out there that for all intents and purposes are gonna be the only 10 schools that can compete. Even with this change, it's vastly different than it's been for the last few years. I remember when we were, when we were talking about building the football-only facility and doing this, changes to the stadium, you know, there was a lot of debate of like, hey, should we spend money on that or should we spend money on NIL? And my comment at the time is you gotta do both because you never know when the playing field's gonna change, no pun intended. And so I'm really glad we did because now we do have a cap on the, on the revenue sharing and facilities are gonna matter again and, and the coaching is gonna matter again and the environment's gonna matter again and the school's gonna matter again. Not just, you know, who's gonna pay who the most amount of money to come to their school. And so I think from that standpoint, it's a great thing. And on the NIL front, I firmly believe that athletes should be get, be able to get paid for their name, image and likeness. You know, if Ira Schofeld is the star quarterback on the team and the school bookstore selling Schofeld, you know, jerseys, why not have Ira be able to get a piece of that revenue? I think that that's totally realistic. But there needs to be a, a structure in place to make sure that Ira is not getting paid more than market for that, right? You know, if it's, if it's really worth $10 a jersey, should he be getting $100,000 a jersey? No. And I think that you've seen with the clearinghouse in NIL, you've seen a lot of deals get denied. I think this is gonna be sort of a tempestuous period for that, but I don't, but I, again, I come back to something you said, every school wants guardrails, every, every school wants to know where the banks of the river are and to know that people that go outside of the banks of the river are going to get penalized. You know, you, you have that in most major sports, right? You have banks to the river and I, you know, you have to have that to have a realistic playing field that you can compete on and every school wants that. I rem, you know, nobody wants to sit up at night wondering whether you're gonna make payroll, right? But every school last year, I would say that probably that we're worried about whether they were gonna make payroll and I don't care who the school was. So anyway, I, I think it's all, I think the structure is good. I hope it works. I'm praying for it all to work and I hope that there is significant teeth out there that if people step out of the banks of the river, that they get penalized.
I think a lot of fans in media, one of the things that you'll hear people say, and I'm sure you've had plenty of people come to you and say this, that the concern is that, you know, at some point, if, if things aren't, if there isn't some structure, if we don't figure out, you know, where the banks are in the river, that fan interest ultimately will subside. Do you, do you worry about that at all? I mean, you're, you are a Florida State sports fan, you're a college athletics fan. Are you concerned about that?
Yeah, um, yes, I, I'm concerned about that and I think everybody shares that concern and that's why there is a lot of desire to have those banks of the river and to have the clearinghouse and to have a structure set up to make sure that, you know, you're, you're competing on as level a playing field as you can and that you just don't have a few teams just running away doing crazy things to try to buy a championship. And because at the heart, at, at the heart of it, we all love the competition, we all love the rivalries, we all love, but you don't walk into a rivalry, it's hard to walk into a rivalry that you've loved for two decades, knowing that there's no chance you have, you have no chance of, of winning. And that's when, that's when it dies, in my opinion.
When you look at these, you mentioned the facility improvements you guys made, the football facility is finally, it's, it's gonna be open here within a couple of months and Doak has their, the renovation, the whole new side, people got to see it about a week or two ago, the whole nation, I guess we'll get to see it on Saturday when Florida State hosts Alabama. You've talked, I mean, you know, you're a, you're a Knoll, you came to Florida State, you've been a Florida State fan your whole life, you've talked about the different accomplishments of the school, from the medical school to, you know, Bobby Bowden coming here, all these things. When you think, when you, when you sit back at some point, these developments, these can, these projects, how significant do you think they're gonna be, not just for athletics, but maybe for the university?
You know, I think they're very significant, extremely significant. You know, we've talked about this, I remember, I think when I did the first one of these, we were talking, we hadn't started on the football-only facility and we hadn't even started on this, talking about the stadium. And now, you know, here we are, I've been chair for four years. We're gonna open the stadium and the football-only facility opens in October. Everybody will move over in October. You know, we've had several pro teams come and look at our football-only facility. We've had several colleges come and look at what we're doing, what we did to the stadium because they're gonna do the same thing. And it's this period, I think we've, we've led the way in this period of sort of redoing these stadiums and a lot of people did football-only facilities before we did, but I think ours, ours is gonna rival anybody's in the nation and it's not, it's not that it's an arms race. For us, you know, the biggest disappointment I have as a fan of Florida State is why it took us so long to address some of these things and why we didn't do some of these things. Now there's, I wasn't on the board at the time, most of the trustees weren't on the board at the time, there were different administrations and so I can't speak to their priorities or why we didn't do certain things. But, you know, we're the only, I think we're one of only two teams in the ACC that didn't have a football-only facility. And when you think about that, I mean, and you think about the history of Florida State, you just, it boggles your mind, there's like, really? We didn't do this? So we've had a lot of catch-up to do and, but we're catching up. And I think that the product that we have today will rival anybody's. And, you know, to the, to the extent that I said, you know, we've got a lot of college teams and a lot of pro teams coming and look at what we did and, and taking ideas from what we did. I think most of the fans, when they walk through the football-only facility, you're gonna be blown away. Now, you know, you can't get away, if we'd done it 10 years ago, we would spend a lot less money, but there's a lot of teams that are upgrading theirs or having to do new things and doing new stadiums and they're gonna spend a lot more money than we did. That's just inflation. But I, I think it's, I'm really proud of what we did, what we've done. I'm proud of the work that the president did, President McCullough did, I'm proud of the work that A.D. Alford and Stephen Ponder at the boosters did to make this happen. But there was a real unity of purpose and a, and a, and a shared goal of doing these things and an alignment to be excellent. And that alignment is stronger than ever today to, to do all this stuff. You can't get this stuff done without good alignment and we have great alignment. And so I, I think everybody's gonna be that, people that haven't been into the West Side yet and even the East Side, I mean, we've made a lot of changes on the East Side too and in the end zone and the football industry, they're gonna be blown away and it's something that to be proud of, I think, for Florida State.
Yeah, it's funny, just the, one of the things I think people were most excited about from the preview, just watching people's comments on social media and some of the people I talked to, was not even the seats or the suites or anything, but just the concourse when you walk in that you don't feel like you're in a warehouse, you know, that you don't feel like you're, you know, and it's.
Very tight warehouse.
It's, uh, it's different. So I think you're right, I think that the feeling.
The other thing I want to say is, and I think I've said this before, it's not that we just wanted to raise prices. You know, we're not, not that we just want. You know, we're not, not that we just wanted to jack up the cost of things. People wanted a different fan experience. We did a lot of surveys and a lot of questionnaires and a lot of discussions with our fans and with the boosters and talking about different products and different types. I mean, you know, three, two years ago, you only had three options in the stadium. You could have done the champions club in the end zone. You could have sat on a metal bench in the rest of the stadium or you could have had a skybox. That's it. Now we have multiple levels of, of, of different things that people can, can choose and it's up to them. And, you know, there's a lot of grumbling about the cost of things. But, you know, we do a lot of benchmarking, we don't just take flyers. We go look at other schools and how much the revenue they generate from their stadiums on game day. And I think our fans would be shocked to see how far behind Florida State was in generating revenue from its stadium on game days. And you only have six or seven of these games a year. So you, you know, that's money you can't squander. And if school's making $4 million or $5 million more a game over six games, forget about the conference you're in or whatever you're doing or whatever their TV deal is, that's things that you can do yourself independently of all that to, to, to raise more revenue. And again, it's not that we're just trying to increase prices, but we have to find additional ways of generating revenue. And if you can match the additional ways of generating revenue with fan experience and fan desire, why wouldn't you do that?
Tom's going to be back here in a second, he's going to bring some of the questions from the chat and also from.
He disappeared.
He'll be coming back, I promise. He, uh, but real quick, there's all, there's other facilities too, and we talk so much about football. Uh, and that's where the focus is and rightfully so, uh, because of the money it generates. But there is also a new lacrosse stadium being built. Uh, I think you guys are doing improvements at some of the other facilities as well. Would you want to kind of run down through some of that as well?
Sure, I mean, we've put millions into the baseball stadium, uh, over the last three years. We've spent a lot of money, I don't know the exact number, uh, in softball, we've spent a lot of money in soccer. Like you said, we're building a new, uh, women's lacrosse facility. You know, we've done a lot of planning over around the Olympic sports and how we can increase those, how we can better those facilities. And, and how to best do that. We've gone and seen a lot of other universities and how they're addressing that. So there's a real concerted effort around a plan to do a lot more improvements. We're going to spend a lot of money, uh, upgrading the basketball facility. And we haven't spent, I don't think meaningful dollars in, in the basketball facility outside of Tucker in the last several years, and it's time for us to do that. I, and I don't know how many of your fans have inner, inner, have had an experience with Luke Laux, but Coach Laux is, he's going to be great. He's raising a lot of money, he's brought a lot of energy, he's going to, I feel really good about where the basketball program's going and, and, and what's coming. And we need to invest because other people are investing and we haven't invested. And it's just that next area, I mean, yes, we focused on a few other things first, but we're going to, we're going to focus on a lot more of those areas. But we spent tens of millions of dollars in the other sports as well. And, you know, we have to, because we want to compete at the highest level in every sport we play. You know, I, I, my wife's a crazy, you know, women's soccer fan, I am too. And I love softball. You know, we, I love the golf program, I mean, we spent a lot of money on the golf course. For those, for those of you that haven't played the FSU golf course, you should, we just got rated 15th in the state. Uh, and you don't do that by, you know, being cheap. But you're, we also just got the, probably the number one recruit in the nation.
I'm not sure, as a university person, you're supposed to talk a whole lot about that, but, but I was going to bring it up, actually. Yeah, no, that's a huge deal. In fact, Matt Lassera, who worked for us, just did an interview with Miles, a young golfer who's maybe the next Tiger Woods. He's, uh, and one of the reasons he said he committed to Florida State, he loves Trey Jones, obviously, and the program, the success they've had. But he talked about the, the golf course, getting to play that, getting to practice every day at that golf course was a big part of it. So that has to make you feel good too.
Yeah, um, you know, when we redid the golf course, we built a 12 hole par three course. It's short game course. And, you know, if you're a golfer and if you want to be a professional golfer, you want to go to great, you want to go to a place that's got great practice facilities that are going to help you improve your game. And, uh, you know, I'm, I'm really proud of our whole facility out there.
We could go on and on. Hi Chair Collins, how are you? I'm back in.
What'd you do? Did you go have dinner?
No, I just, I just went four putted, uh, out, out, on the backyard. Yeah, easy to do, not for Miles Russell, uh, who again, I think Ira's right, we'll probably move off that subject so we don't get anybody in trouble. But we do have questions from both the message boards and from our War Champ TV community. And I do want to start, uh, somebody was going to take a shot at this, and so we'll, we'll get it out of the way here. But Saudi Noel on the boards asks, should I buy a case of hand warmers to watch FSU play away games? When would be a good time to preorder them? You, you could take that as you will and dismiss it as you will, but somebody was going to take a, a chance with that particular kind of question.
Well, I still think we're going to play Boston College. I still think that we're going to play Syracuse, I still think we're going to play Pitt. So, you know.
And it might get, you know, it gets chilly.
Warmers if you want.
It might get chilly at Stanford, uh, we'll see how.
Always be prepared, let's put it that way.
There you go.
Fair enough, uh, November's cool in a lot of places around the country. Let's see, uh, Vicker Sam on the boards, couple of questions here, and I know you were just listening and listing, uh, projects at stadiums and with specific sports, but which is higher on the priority list? An upgrade to Hauser Stadium or further renovations to Dope? Also, how close is FSU to attaining AAU status?
I would say the higher priority list today is probably upgrades to Dick Hauser. Because obviously we've just spent a lot of money on the, on the stadium and, and the football only facility. You know, and A.D. Alford's a huge baseball guy, played baseball in college and, you know, he, he loves it. And Link isn't shy. Link's not shy about, you know, having a want list. And I don't know if he's watching this, but he's probably smiling. He's like, yeah, you're right. So, uh, Link has a lot of desires and, and rightfully so. We can increase the fan experience there, we can do a lot of things there. And to me, at this point in time, with all the things that we have to do, it just makes a lot more sense to make Hauser better and improve Hauser than to scrap it all and build a new baseball stadium. It, it just, that doesn't make sense to me. And, you know, maybe that'll be for the next chair or the next A.D. or the next president, uh, to, to, to bite that one off.
Or maybe, uh, maybe Cal Raleigh's new contract, maybe when that comes up, maybe, uh, maybe he can help you out.
How about that? It's amazing, amazing. And then, uh, the second part of the question was AAU?
Correct.
The numbers aren't official this year, but you know, we're, we're touching on $500 million of, uh, research expenditures in this last year. We're getting really close, even with some cuts from the federal government, you know, there's, I don't know how many of your fans watched that, but the whole Doge effort uh, and the canceling of, of federal grants, I mean, I think we had about $90 million of federal grants cut. So, you know, taking a few steps forward and then half a step back. But Stacy Patterson, our Vice President of Research and President McCullough are laser focused on increasing our research. Obviously, we're building FSU Health. I mean, we've already committed over a half a billion dollars to FSU Health, we're building a hospital in Panama City. We're, the academic medical center on the TMH campus in Tallahassee will be open next year. We've broken ground, I mean, we've gotten steel up, I think, on all three floors. You know, we're going to spend, um, we're redoing our, our nursing school. So we're, we're, as a university and as administration, we're laser focused on, on research. And really, um, that's the only thing holding us back is the level of our research expenditures. And so we're, we're focused on that. So, you know, you can make the argument today that Florida State, you know, has the merit to be in the AAU. But it'll happen when it happens. Uh, how close we are, I don't know. I would say, like I said, I, you know, I could make a strong case to the AAU people that we, we belong today. But I would say certainly within probably the next two or three years, uh, they, there, there would be, people will be hard pressed for it to say that we don't belong in the AAU.
Tom, can I slide in here real quick?
You got it.
Just, we, you talked earlier about the basketball facility and then also obviously the Tucker Center's got some improvements with the business school now, which that building's incredible. I mean, I haven't been inside, obviously, but it looks incredible. Is that, um, I know there has been off again, on again, talks about maybe like creating a, a district there with the Tucker Center and the business school and maybe getting some hotels and is that still a possibility? Is that still in the, in the horizon or kind of where is that? Because obviously they've, College Town is so impressive. Gain Street constantly getting better, and then now you have that space as well.
Yeah, um, I think you're going to see that, that, that part of campus really grow over the next five to six years. Maybe a little bit longer. But again, there, um, the business school, I mean, that, that's another project that just sort of languished for years. And, um, you know, when the president came in and you know, he and I sat down and we were talking about some of the early goals and it's like, look, we have to get this done, we have to get the fundraising for this done. And he really put an emphasis on raising funds for that, the business school. And that's, um, it's going to be one of the nicer buildings, uh, business school buildings in the country. Big, new, um, lot of technology in that building. It was expensive, um, but we got it done. And that is a nucleus to build a lot of things around. And, you know, we've talked about a hotel and a convention center and, and things like that. I would say stay tuned. In the next few months, you might hear something about that. I would say stay tuned.
Sounds good.
Another last question from the boards and then we get to the War Champ TV audience. This is a funny one, ruthless gaze, which is a nice handle. I'm curious if he laughs out loud when he reads all the social media posts with people that state they have inside information on realignment and they know what will happen. How do you feel about all that speculation, Chair Collins?
I think I said this before, I believe, and I probably it's lower today, I probably believe about 10% of what I read on War Champ. About 1% of what I read on, uh, well, from the boards.
I got you, I got you. I don't need one of our competitors clipping that out.
1% of what I hear on Twitter or what I see on Twitter. You know, the crazy thing about it is I've gotten more texts about the color of the end zone in the last week than you can imagine. People are wrapped around the axle about this and it's just, it's just ridiculous. Yeah, there you go, softball question, will the end zones be painted? Yes, they will be painted.
All right.
Breaking news, breaking news.
13-0 when they were just grass and it just said Florida State and Seminoles were 13-0.
It, it wasn't a problem until last year, then it became a real problem.
Yeah, um, you know, and after you go 13-0, how do you paint the end zones? So, uh, it's just, it's, it's amazing. But I, you know, it all comes from a place of passion. I always wonder, you know, who these people are. Uh, I don't go on War Champ a lot, but you know, that realignment thing is just crazy. Crazy. And, um, the, the crazier part is, you know, the, almost the expectation or the, the disgruntled people on there, they're like, well, how come you haven't done this yet? It's like, well, do you actually even understand the variables at play in, in doing something like that? And, you know, that's what people don't get, they want instant gratification, they want what they want and they want it now. Well, great, I wanted to be seven foot two and in the NBA, that didn't work out. But all I can say is that you have everybody at the university, the board, the administration, working hard on a lot of things and accomplishing a lot of things. So for all of you that were wondering, why can't you build a football only facility? Why are we, why are we doing something with the stadium? Why are we fixing base? We're doing it all. You're welcome. I, I, I don't know what to tell you. If it's not on your timeline, but it's a little bit more complex than just wanting what you want when you want it. But I understand that as a fan, I, I, you know, I get, I get frustrated too, um, sometimes.
I was going to say, you, I mean, 10 years ago, you were maybe kind of in their shoes in some things, you know, maybe not as drastic, but right? Like, once you get in it and see how it actually works, it's probably a different perspective.
Yeah, look, I, I own my own company and, you know, I, I like to think I can make things happen when I want to make, when I, when I want them to happen. But, you know, at the university, it's totally different. You know, we have a lot of masters, we have the legislature, we have the board of governors. We have so many processes and procedures that we have to follow and, uh, you know, it drives Michael Alford crazy. He thinks that we have to go through 12 committees to get a decision made and, um, it's not 12, but he's not wrong, it's a lot. And, you know, I spend most of my time, you know, knocking down walls or barriers on, on stuff like that. And some of them you can knock down, but some of them you just can't, you got to go around them or go through them and, um, it just takes a while. And I would just ask people to just believe in the, the fact that everybody on the board and everybody in the administration is, is focused or, or on it. And, um, I don't think we've given them a lot to be disappointed about in the last few years.
Do want to follow up with, uh, the, the question, yes, they will be painted, but I need to be a hard hitting journalist here, Chair Collins, will they be painted garnet? The, the end zones, do you know?
It's a surprise.
All right.
It's a surprise. I, I, I think, I think A.D. Alford tweeted something out about this.
He, well, it was a veiled, it was a veiled tweet, I think people.
Tweet. You know, it was a veiled tweet. But it was wonderful to see the 200 responses to it. Some people are like, yes, some people are like, no, some people are like, why are you doing this?
People are locked in on the end zone discussion.
Amazing, it's amazing, we have nothing better to do than talk about.
We really need the football to be kicked off on Saturday, like all of us do in the worst way. Uh, old school man is asking, uh, will there be an open house for the public to see the football only facility after it's completed?
I'm sure there will be, there should be. Let me, let me write that down. Um, I'm, I'm sure they're going to do something. But, you know, I, I haven't asked that specific question. I've, I've been through it, I don't know, a few times, um, from the beginning and, yeah, but they're going to be really impressed. So, so, yeah, we'll, we'll do that.
I also want to follow up real quick, I just want to follow up on what you said about Link and his wishlist. I would say that I think for the most part, the coaches you guys have now, from Lonnie Alameda to Link, to Luke Laux, to Mike Norvell, like there, it's not just like begging or not just demanding to, for the sake of demanding, it feels like they all have real purposes for what they want to do. Which is, is helpful. Respond to that if you don't want to, I just.
They do, and look, I, I've never met a coach who didn't want something more. And that's great, I, you know, they want to be excellent, they want to be better. And if this is what they think is going to help make them better, I want them to be an advocate for that. Michael Alford wants them to be an advocate for it. So, um, that doesn't bother me a bit. You know, Link, uh, you know, Link is, is, is unique in that he grew up in Tallahassee. He went to Florida State and then he went to a lot of other universities and now he's back. And so I'm not sure what his, I'm not sure what's real and what's perception, but he has a perception of Tallahassee and Dick Hauser being a lot and, and the surrounding area being a lot better back then than it is today. And in some cases, he's right and we can do some things about that and we should. But he, uh, he, he's somewhat unique in that because he grew up here.
Right.
Got a question on how you measure success, that's always good to define terms. Houston in the chat says, how does the board of trustees measure success in the football program? Is it through conference championships, playoff appearances, natties? What should we expect for this program moving forward?
I think it's all of those, uh, conference championships, playoff appearances, national championships. I, I, I think that we all expect that. And, and we all measure ourselves. And, and we all measure ourselves by that. And I know Coach Norvell and all the coaches measure that. I don't think any of them want to be mediocre. I don't think any of them want to go two and 10. I, I think they all want to win a national championship. And so, you know, you gotta, and then when you put that next to Florida State's history of national championships, and I, I read Corey's article the other day, and I guess we have six more.
You have nine now. Congratulations.
Yeah, we have, we have nine now. I mean, if Auburn could do it, I mean, you know, okay. If UCF can claim a national championship, we certainly can claim the Sagarin championship or, you know, whatever. I remember when I was a kid, you know, they always published the Sagarin ready sports page and I used to watch that all the time and, you know, used to love it when Florida State was in the top five and three and two and one, obviously. But anyway, I, I think, yeah, we want to see success. We want to see wins. But most importantly, we want to see progress. It's hard to judge anybody in the last couple of years because it's been so crazy. You know, people ask me all the time, how are we going to be this year? And I'm like, we have 50 new players. We got a new quarterback. We got new receivers. We got, you know, you've got so much turnover that, and so adjusting to that and, and, and working your way through that. And now, now it's changed again. You know, we have a, a cap, a revenue, a revenue sharing cap. And NIL has changed. And so how's that going to change things? And imagine being judged at your job when the conditions of your job site change dramatically every other day. Right? How come you didn't accomplish this? Well, they moved the field over here, right? And I went here. You know, these five people knew nothing about the widgets we were making and we were supposed to keep making them at the same pace. It's incredibly difficult. That said, I mean, some people are doing it and, and some people aren't. And we certainly expect to do it and want to do it. And I, but I think that there's total alignment there with the coaching staff and, and the university on all of that. I would be, I would be concerned if there wasn't, but there is, you know, there's total alignment there.
I've just one question. This one that comes from me because we've exhausted our questions for the night.
We killed them all.
Knocked them down. So I'm, I'm just curious for the remaining time of your tenure in, in the role that you have with immense influence, just wondering what personal goals you have and some things that, I know you've listed a lot of projects that are upcoming, but things that you want to see through in your tenure as the chairman of the board?
You know, there's so many and there's so many that a lot of your fans and viewers don't know about. I mean, one of my big projects is, you know, we have these sprawling maintenance edifice in the middle of campus called Mendenhall, right? It's a one-story sprawling. It's where all of our facilities are. It's the most valuable real estate we have at Florida State. It's in the heart of campus and it looks terrible and we can do a lot better. So we've gotten $65 million from the legislature and we're going to take that off campus. You know, we can build a million, 1.4 million square feet on that and it's right next to the Union. It's at the heart of campus. I want to see that done. We're going to build four new dorms on campus in the next four or five years. I don't know that I'll still be here in this role before that gets done, but that's underway. You know, we're going to build a new nursing school, the chemistry building. We're spending $95 million in redoing the old chemistry building. You would walked in, you know, it looked great from the outside, but you walk in and you're like, oh my God, this is horrible. And I want to see us build the hospital in Panama City. That's underway. I want to see FSU Health on T, on TMH open and that's underway. There's so many, you know, we're, we're, we're probably three quarters of the way money raised on building a new veterans center and putting our ROTC programs in there and our World War II museum and our big center for veterans. I, I, I love how veteran focused we are and I want to see that built. There's, you know, there's an endless list of things that I'd like to see done before my tenure ends, but you know, some of them will be done and some of them won't be done, but you know, that's what gets me motivated every day is to accomplish as much of that as I can before I go. I want us to, you know, make significant progress on, on the clubhouse of the golf course and that's underway. And there's so many projects that have nothing to do with athletics that have everything to do with the university.
Are any closing questions or remarks?
Yeah, my last thing was just, I don't know if you want to give the fan base a pep talk. I do think that there's concern in the fan base. We touched on it a little bit earlier. That just can Florida State be what Florida State was? Now, obviously the dynasty, probably nobody ever does that again. 14 straight top five finishes was outrageous. Nick Saban didn't even do that. But how, how confident are you in, in, in just if you talk about the appetite in the university to get Florida State where it needs to be in terms of football specifically?
First of all, I'm very confident in our coaching staff. I'm very confident in the changes that Coach Norvell made. I'm, I'm buoyed by the fact that going forward from a recruiting standpoint, we're going to have the proper facilities to be able to recruit and bring those people in. I, I believe, I believe in where we're going. I personally, as a fan, I never experienced anything like we had last year. I don't know that, I don't know how many did, how many have. So we certainly don't want to go back there. And, but I, I have a lot of belief in the, the work ethic, the skill, the drive to, to get to where we want to be. Everybody knows the expectation, right? And just because we don't meet our expectations doesn't, doesn't mean we lower our expectations, right? We used to sell our kids that. Just because, you know, you didn't get, you didn't reach the bar, doesn't mean we're going to lower it. And so I, I feel pretty confident. I feel really confident in, in what we're going to do this year. And I, I don't know any other, I don't know what else to say other than I, I feel good about the people we have and the motivation that they have. And, but you know, still comes down to 18 to 21-year-old kids who, you know, they got to perform. I don't, I think we're going to put them in the good position to perform. But it's like Tommy Fleetwood, right? Tommy Fleetwood's a great golfer. You know, he just couldn't get it done and then he finally gets it done. You know, was he, was he a terrible, was he a terrible golfer three weeks ago? No. Is he that much better today? No. But he stayed after it and I, I, that's what I feel good about our group doing.
I just remind real, remind people real quick. We do have that QR code here that was on the video. You guys can use that if you want to make a contribution to Seminole Boosters, which they will gladly accept. Was there anything else?
I want to give a shout out to the boosters. I want to give a shout out to Stephen Ponder and his entire staff. The job that they've done, and I know there's a lot of disgruntled people about the stadium, but the job that they did, I mean, to, to, to take down the side of the stadium, reseed it, resell it after decades of having, you know, several, you know, one way. It, it took a lot of work and they've done an amazing job. Charlie Dudley, the chairman of the boosters, done an amazing job. Warner Peacock, again, chairman of the boosters before Charlie, done an amazing job and that's a big lift. And I, I think that, but we need more people in the boat rowing. There's no two ways about it. You know, I, we do a lot of benchmarking against other schools, season ticket sales, you know, revenue produced in the stadium, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We can be a lot better and we need to be a lot better. But we need more people in the boat rowing to get us better. And, you know, there's a lot of people, I, I read it, ah, you know, I'm not giving to the boosters. I'm not doing this. I'm upset about that and I, you know, whatever. Okay, that's fine. But at the end of the day, you're either a fan and you want to help or you're just a detractor. And, you know, I see the boards, you know, they get tired of people being detractors and I don't like detractors. All that negative energy, that does nobody any good. We got a lot of things to solve. We got a lot of things to do and we need a lot of people helping. So if you're not a booster or if you're not helping monetarily, I would just ask that you rethink that. And not everybody's a million dollar donor or half a million dollars or $5,000 donor. You know, there's a reason why we have donor levels at $70 and, you know, $500. I would just ask people to consider that. You know, we have four, over 400,000 living alumni and less than 5% are annual members of the boosters. Maybe a little bit more than 5% now. That's crazy. Think if you doubled that. Think if you just got 10% of the living alumni to be boosters at some level. Think of the power of that. And that I think people lose sight of. And I would just ask you all to, to, to reconsider your position on that if you're not a donor.
All right, Chairman Collins, what's the travel schedule like? What, what day are you getting up here for the Bama game?
I will be there Thursday morning. I have a meeting in the morning and then we have two days of Board of Trustees meetings on Thursday and Friday. We've got committee meetings all day Thursday and then we have a dinner Friday or Thursday night at the stadium. And then we have a board meeting all day Friday until about one. And then I'm free, except I got some more events and a dinner that night, but I'm coming up Thursday morning early.
Maybe you can have the Board of Trustees come over to the corner pocket Friday afternoon. Tom, you, you want to extend the invitation?
Where, where is the corner pocket?
Oh, come on.
2475 Appalachian Parkway. It's, it's Tallahassee's premier location and we'll be having a, a four-hour shindig on Friday night. You're most welcome.
What time is your shindig start and what time does it end?
Four to 8:00 PM. It's, it's like happy hour on steroids. It'll be an excellent time.
Maybe I'll come by at four. I can't come by, I can't stay past about five, but maybe I'll come by at four.
Sounds good.
Well, we appreciate the time you made for, to us tonight and obviously everybody that we address on, on the multimedia network. Thank you for, for doing this again. It's been too long and hopefully we get to do it again soon.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate it, guys.
That is Peter Collins, the chairman of the board for Florida State University's Board of Trustees. And we are going to react to that here very, very shortly. As we change marquise, this link stays live. Stay locked in right here on War Champ TV as the Monday Smash presented by State Farm Agent Russ Voorhees comes your way very, very shortly. Give Ira and I just about three to four minutes time to collect ourselves and we'll be right back with you here on War Champ TV. Don't go anywhere. Alrighty, here we go. Let's, um, there it is. Boom. And now you see us from behind the overlay. He's Irish Raffel, managing editor of warchant.com. My name is Tom Lang and welcome to the Monday Smash right here on War Champ TV. To those of you that stuck around, uh, looks like well over a thousand across the multimedia footprint of War Champ TV. We appreciate you for hanging out after the special town hall with FSU Board of Trustees Chair Peter Collins. And we can react to that right at the outset. Ira, how do you think that went? There, here's, here's our little post-show green room that we can, that we could do in front of, uh, thousands of people here.
I like that we got the breaking news about the painted end zones. That was big. That was, uh, the needle mover. Um, no, I mean, I thought it was good. I, I always think it's good for, you know, him or people in his position, uh, to get an opportunity to do those things. And you know, listen, I, I think, um, you know, sometimes I don't know if everybody pays a close attention to what a board of trustees does. Uh, it's kind of a, you know, it's not, it's kind of in the weeds a little bit. So that, you know, the way the university works is you have the president of the university, then you have a board of trustees that is appointed by the governor, basically. And then the board of governors above them. But they kind of set the big picture course of the university and, uh, but it just goes to show how important athletics is that Peter Collins, uh, who is, you know, as he mentioned, runs his own company. This is a voluntary position to be on the board of trustees. All of these trustees are mostly FSU grads. Uh, not always, but mostly FSU grads, I believe. Um, who just want to kind of help give back to the school and help set the course of the university. And uh, so he's been doing it now for a few years and, uh, you know, casual conversations, he's, you know, let me know that there are people in his company that wish he spent a little bit more time on the company sometimes than he does on FSU. But I think that comes across in, in a conversation like this. All of these trustees really, you know, we may not agree with everything they do. They may not make every right decision. But clearly the passion for the school and, and trying to make the school so much better. And, you know, and again, I didn't grow up around Florida State like most people watching this did. But even in the 25 years or so that I've been around full-time, it's just amazing how much the campus has changed, how much the facilities have changed, how much the school has changed. And uh, you know, and from the sounds of things, it's, it's not slowing down anytime soon. I imagine you, who, who's been coming here for a long time. Uh, it's just kind of breathtaking with the university, the direction the university's kind of gone in.
First time I was ever here was 1991 to drop off my sister for her freshman year, uh, something a lot of parents are doing right now across this country and then maybe some in Tallahassee and, uh, outside of the weepiness, uh, from the parents and, and my sister as, as the car was pulling away, I, I remember, yes, a very, very different Tallahassee, Florida. I mean, not, not just campus, but Tallahassee, it just, it looked different. The roads where it went different places. Ira, obviously you remember this, but like it connected Pensacola connected through campuses, a very, very different place. The one thing I'll give Chairman Collins credit for is he's not afraid. Uh, it is not easy to, to deliver a message, especially coming off of a, a rough football season that more needs to be done, that more need to get involved to help, uh, you know, steer athletics specifically, but the university is where it wants to go. Where it needs to go from a revenue generation standpoint, that's not an easy message, uh, message to deliver when people don't yet have new football in 2025, but he's not afraid to get blunt if he needs to in those situations.
Well, I thought he also was pretty candid about, you know, the expectations don't change and you know, that, that he touched on a lot of the challenges now in the college sports space. Uh, the, the, the playing field, so to speak, is constantly changing with NIL and then now revenue sharing and all these different things, the transfer portal coming and going, and sometimes you whiff, sometimes you hit it. And, um, and so he acknowledged that, that there's a huge challenge there, but at the same time, somebody's winning, somebody's being successful and the expectations aren't going to be lowered just because of things or, you know, the job got more difficult than maybe it was 10 years ago or 20 years ago or 30 years ago. And so, yeah, I, you know, again, I, I know fans sometimes wonder and maybe media, people in the media wonder, you know, who's making this, these decisions and, and what are they really out for? And, uh, yeah, man, I just think it comes across when you talk to Peter Collins. That the passion is there, the desire to be great in everything Florida State does is there. And, uh, I don't think they're going to back down just because of one bad year.
And this is where, you know, I've seen this debate on the boards. I'm a part of at least one thread where there's a debate on, you know, uh, operations and so forth. And while I still believe in some ways that there are legitimate places that I think the fan or the booster or the alumni who, who makes their way to Tallahassee has every right to be frustrated with certain things. I don't have any doubt where their head is and where their heart is, uh, at the board level, uh, as you're speaking about typically this is somebody who's wired to give back. Um, so it's good to see that where Florida State is and its history, Ira, there is alignment. I don't think he's wrong about that. Um, I, I think there are just some things that like anything else, I think people have a right to be a little bit miffed or concerned about, but he doesn't pull any punches, does Chair Collins? And, and certainly it seems like, uh, as he was speaking on all the projects that are being done. They're kept busy for good reason because both athletically and then on the academic side, it's like they're building new, um, high rises and, and new centers and renovating things left and right, uh, in every wing of the university. So it's not like they're not busy in that particular department.
Yeah. And he also, it was good to get the update on the AAU status. Uh, one of the, uh, viewers or maybe a word chance subscriber asked the question about how close are getting to AAU status? And I think they were a little frustrated that they didn't get included last time, but they made a lot of efforts. And again, when President McCullough was hired, and we'll talk about sports here in a second, but I just want to touch on this. So when, when they had the last presidential search, when John Thrasher announced he was going to be retiring and they had that search, basically all the finalists and they, you know, they, as he talked about the open, uh, government in Florida, all the interviews had to be in public. So they broadcast them all. So you were able to watch all these interviews and really everybody that was interviewed that made it that far in the process, one of the finalists to be president of Florida State University, research, specifically medical research was like number one on the list of what they were going to bring. And the reason that wasn't an accident is because what the board wanted and the school wants is to get that AAU status. You've got to have research funds. You've got to be spending money in research. And usually that's going to be in, uh, medical science fields. Well, that, that's a huge ticket to get an AAU status. And he, I think he mentioned that, uh, I think the number couldn't, wasn't sure if he said 500 million or 500 billion. Yeah. Um, of how much money they, they are now getting for research funds, which is just huge. And, and it's a, and you know, that from an athletic standpoint, we all know that, uh, there's a feeling that whether or not the big 10 is going to offer a school sometimes depends on whether or not they have an AAU status. So it's all, um, part of a big picture and a part of a big plan that the university has. And it's cool to hear some of that. But I'm sure a lot of people turning up, tuning into the smash, want to hear more about the dev chart and, and other conversations as well.
I don't know. I'd like to go into some state legislation if we could right now, uh, maybe some red tape. I think, I think this could be the red tape section of the Monday smash. No, it will not be. In fact, I'm going to start with a question from, uh, good old Wes, Wes in the villages. It says, yo, Tom and Ira, what's your biggest takeaway from the depth chart? Glad, uh, see y'all Friday night at the CP go Knowles beat Bama. All right. So this was one of the major items of the day. It was just after 11 o'clock this morning that Florida State decided to get out in front of it. Ira, usually it's a piece of paper distributed before the press conference. They went to social media. They're like, here it is, everybody. Here is our two deep. So I'll put that up on the screen now. If you did not see Florida State's depth chart and you did not head over to warchant.com tisk, tisk, uh, here it is for you right now. Both offense and defense are listed there vertically. I could scroll down if you need to. Ira, what places surprised you or perked your, uh, piqued your interest?
You know, I think the biggest thing that, uh, I say surprised me, but, but probably surprised me is, uh, just how committed, uh, Tony White and his staff are to really having a fair, open competition and not caring about who was there before. I know like a lot of FSU fans, when they saw this, they asked themselves, okay, who's AJ Kotrell? Who's Donnie Hebert? Uh, it's safety. Those are two second team guys on this roster. Neither of what them were big recruiting wins for Florida State. They didn't sign them. They didn't have big signing day press conferences. They didn't spend a ton of money flying them in for their official visits. But they're two guys that have been in the program now for three or four years. They've really been good practice players. And I'll be honest with you, man, and you, you and I have been at practice and I've, I've said this to people in the program that I thought AJ Kotrell could play. I, I didn't understand when there were times when their linebackers were really struggling and the previous coaching staff wouldn't give them a shot. I, I, you know, and again, I don't have as much information as they do. Maybe the 40 time isn't what it needs to be, maybe whatever it is. But I'm glad to hear that they're looking at not worrying about where a guy was, who signed you, what you were evaluated in, in their recruiting process. But who are the best players? And I think that's a good sign, man. I think it sends a great message also that you have freshmen, uh, Shamar Arno, uh, you know, Jalen, Javon Boggs, who a lot of people wondered, would he really get a starting job? I mean, to me, the big message from this depth chart is if you're a freshman, if you're a former walk-on, if you're a younger player, it doesn't matter. If you're the best player, you got a chance to play. And that's like, that's the message you want to send. That's what fosters competition. It's not all just fiery speeches and motivational talks from coaches. This is what you have to do to let everybody know, man, if you earn your spot, you're going to get your chance. And I think that's a really good message.
Got to follow up about that defensive, uh, side of things and what the depth chart says, uh, because you discussed this earlier today on the Jeff Cameron show and I wanted to get your opinion on it. Uh, Brett first, we'll go to this. Roydell is listed first at running back. Does that mean both will play, but Roydell will get out on the field first? Sawchuk may get more carries, for example, but Roydell will be given the honor to start. Do you read, do you read that much into it, uh, Ira, in terms of top line versus line number two?
I, I think it'll be just like any starting position. I mean, I think Roydell will, will be the first one out there. And if he runs the ball well, I think he'll get more opportunities. If he doesn't run the ball well, I think Gavin Sawchuk is right there. I don't think there's a big change. They've both played a ton of college football. Roydell did it at Alabama. Gavin Sawchuk did it at Oklahoma. They've both been starting running backs. They both played in big games. And so I think they're each going to get opportunities and then they'll go with who's performing. And so, and then I think it'll go from there, but uh, I also think Usmane Cromer is going to play a ton. And I, and I think Jalen Lucas, the other starting running back, if they go with the two backs at a time, uh, will get tons of opportunities as well because of his speed and his, his agility and skillset. Um, so it's going to be interesting to see how they use those guys, but I don't think it's just a, uh, a salute to Roydell for being a good guy. If he's in there and he produces, I think he'll stay in there for a while. If he's not, then I think they'll go quickly to Sacha.
I don't intend this to be, uh, dwelling on a negative, Ira, but, but you, you guys discussed this earlier today and you said, if the message isn't clear now, if you're looking at the two deep and you see a name like AJ Kotrell, or you see Donnie Hebert, um, or Arno, you know, as a true freshman on line number two at one of the two corner positions. Uh, then, you know, the message won't be, won't be clear i- if you don't understand it now with them releasing the depth chart. Does that give you any concern about the mentality of some players, uh, on the defensive side of the ball, whether or not they're bought in? Uh, obviously anybody who's on this list is bought in, but i- is there a second side to that coin that leaves you concerned at all that maybe some of the names that were highly touted, uh, coming out of high school still don't seem to be able to break through?
Yeah. I mean, I think every case is going to be different. You know, some guys probably are not responding to the challenge, the way they want them to respond to the challenge. Other guys may not be as good as they were thought to be. Um, and you know, the other part of it is every coaching staff has different needs and different desires at those positions. I remember specifically when Jimbo Fisher came in, uh, there was a high profile player. There was a major big time recruit. Um, that the previous coaching staff, you know, and Coach Bowden, the previous, before Jimbo joined the staff as an offensive coordinator, they landed this player who's a really high profile player. And Jimbo confided later that he wouldn't have signed that player at LSU. It just didn't, he's not a good fit for what he wants at that position. But Florida State was thrilled to get him before Jimbo came in. Well, now that Jimbo comes in and he's got to figure out what to do with this player who maybe wouldn't have been exactly what he wanted. So I think that's part of it. You change schemes, you change, uh, defensive systems. You change coaching staffs. So some of these guys may not be with the program, but all other of them may just not be suited to do what this coaching staff wants them to do. So I think it's probably some of both.
Like this comment from the elite coalition. There's no question here, but he says, I love the fact that this new staff is playing the people who put in the work and responds to the challenges set forth by FSU. It's refreshing and that's how it should be. Amen to that. Uh, it, hopefully this is something that continues. Because anybody could put out a depth chart, but then I think we need to see Ira as the game presents itself and, uh, adversity strikes. This is something that's in the piece that you can find right now, warchant.com, Henshaw's house. When it's real and the game counts and adversity hits, how do the players behave? How do the coaches behave? How do substitution patterns change if they need to? That's all going to be something that we just can't straight up, we cannot predict that until we see how it all lays out. Especially the relationship between the coordinators and the head coach on Saturday. This is all brand new. There's a lot, you probably need to watch this game two or three times to take in all the new that's going to be out there on the field for 60 minutes on Saturday.
Yeah. And just the, the other side of the spectrum on this whole topic about, you know, who giving guys opportunities and all that. This is all, this is all what you want to see. I think this is all very positive. I think it's great. Uh, at the end of the day though, if guys get on the field, if these guys have done everything right in practice, they've, they've learned the, the system, they know exactly what they're supposed to do. They've played well in practice. They've done everything you need them to do, but they get out there on the field and they're just not fast enough. Or they're not talented enough, then that's, the coaching staff has to figure that out because that's a possibility as well. I mean, one of the, the players that you and I, uh, talked a lot about a few years ago was Tre'Shawn Ward, who, uh, he got a little bit of opportunities one year at the end of a season. We saw him in spring. We're like, man, this guy can really play. He gets the opportunity. He ends up becoming a huge part of their offense that next year. But I'll tell you that there were some people in the program who still felt Tre'Shawn Ward was a walk-on because he's not fast enough. And so there's that part of it. There's that reality of it too. Like everybody wants the player who's doing all the right things to be rewarded and that's great. But if he gets out there and they can't cover in space or they can't make that play on the ball, everybody's going to be calling for the, the highly touted scholarship guy to get back in the game. So we'll see how it all plays out. But, but again, as far as right now and the coaching staff, I believe they're doing what they, they need to do to get the right players on the field.
We're going to continue with your questions here tonight because it seems like the depth chart has, uh, brought a lot of interest to the table. So let's keep it rolling with Jacob Carlton here who says, what's up, man? Do you think Cromer still gets on the field despite, uh, or after seeing depth chart? Uh, yeah, I, I think for sure. The question is, I, I would set this over under Ira, drive three before or after or right on the money? What do you think? Drive three for the offense that Cromer gets, uh, to see the field?
Good number, Tom. It's a good number. Uh, I, yeah, I think, uh, if I, I would not pick under probably. Um, just because I don't know, you know, if, if Florida State had two long sustained drives, then maybe I could see him getting in on, on drive three. I do think they're going to want him to kind of see the flow of the game, feel the, the pace of the game, feel the, the speed of the game from down there on the sidelines before you throw him in there. Again, Usmane Cromer is an elite talent. Uh, for people that are at practices, they rave about him just being at a different level. The coaches and players, the one word they all use to describe him is different. And that's a good thing for him. Um, and so he's going to get opportunities, but I don't think they want to throw him out there, uh, maybe before to put him in an unfair situation. So I think they're going to look for the right place. But yeah, third drive, fourth drive, somewhere in there. I think it'll definitely happen. If it happens in the second drive, that would be a little bit earlier than I'd expect.
Looking in the right place. That's well put. If you're looking in the right place for insurance coverage, then you're looking with State Farm Agent Russ Voorhees, who covers you if you live in the state of Florida, the state of Georgia and the state of Alabama. If you have insurance needs backed by the power of State Farm, Russ Voorhees, who is a true Knoll, has you covered head to toe. And he also is available for questions and conversations. His staff is outstanding. Their customer service is first rate. If you want to support a Knoll who supports Florida State athletics head to toe, like Peter Collins was speaking about, they could use support. Well, you don't need to tell Russ that. Russ is extremely supportive of Florida State athletics. If you want to support somebody like that, Ira, State Farm Agent Russ Voorhees is the guy to go see.
Yeah. If you're over in the Jacksonville area, you're in luck because they do have two offices over there in Jacksonville Beach and Orange Park. And you can go in and talk to, uh, his staff and Russ himself, probably if he's not, you know, getting married like he was a few weeks ago, uh, which was again, he, he was, he sent us some pictures. We should have put them on the, on the, on the, uh, on the show, but no, it was awesome. They had a great wedding there and congratulations to him and his bride, beautiful bride. But you can go into the offices there, or if you're in Florida, Georgia or Alabama, you don't have to go in the offices. You can call, you can go to the website, russvorhis.com, R U S S V O R H I S dot com. Or call the phone numbers that are on the screen there as well. And, uh, they'll take care of you and they'll give you, uh, consultations, meet your needs and also try to, you know, give you a competitive rate. And, and certainly we know that they provide great customer service and great coverage.
Effusive praise from Carol in the chat. My goodness. She says, I want to thank both of you gentlemen, Tom and Ira, for the Monday night smash because together you are my favorite duo on War Champ. Well, thank you very much, Carol. I've been listening for a long time and you two, along with Michael and recruiting, in recruiting reporting and D Rob are the best. You for professional, positive and pleasant. Well, that's nice. The three Ps to making it a well-balanced and even keeled broadcast. Thanks again for everything. And thanks for answering my questions too. So here's my question and I looked this up. So I thought, wow. After all that, thank you so much for the sentiment, Carol. Oh no, did we lose your question? Well, I pulled it up on my phone as you were answering the last point. It's very simple. After looking at the depth chart today, is your confidence level changing at all in what's possible for Florida State either Saturday or for the season? So what do you think, Ira?
Uh, I don't think my confidence level is changing. I mean, I, I was a little bit concerned about the defense coming into it. And before we saw the depth chart and I'm a little bit concerned about it now. And it's not, um, because I don't have confidence in Tony White or that staff. I just don't know if they have the pieces they need, uh, to be good enough, especially up front against a team like Alabama. I think they'll be fine in a lot of games a season. But we, we know what that Alabama offensive line is all about. Uh, it's, I mean, you're talking about a bunch of NFL guys, high level NFL draft picks on that offensive line. And I think Florida State's done a good job of rebuilding their defensive line, but probably not to the degree it needs to be. Um, so that's my concern, but I, I kind of knew that before I saw the depth chart. Uh, I have a lot of confidence in the secondary. I like the, uh, what we, I like what we've heard about the linebackers. I need to see that. I, I can't sign off on that. I feel good about the secondary. I feel, I like what we're hearing about the linebackers. And then I'm just curious about the defensive line. If those guys play, if Darryl Jackson plays at his highest level, if James Williams is everything he's supposed to be, if Jake, Jason Jenkins lives up to what he was supposed to be when he came out of Tennessee, they'll probably be fine. Um, but, but there's a lot of guys there that I, I don't know how they're going to stack up against an elite offensive line, but I don't know. Offensively, I'm pretty confident in the offense and I have been and I, nothing changed from the depth chart. How about you?
Yeah, I, I'll add a note on the offensive side where I'm a little bit confused, but I just, I echo everything you say about the linebackers. They have been talking, the talk about the linebackers for months, even before we got into proper preseason camp about the, the strides they're taking and, and the versatility and how they're the heartbeat of the defense. I'd love to see it. If that's true, if it really is true. And I, see, I'm saying it out loud and I don't believe it yet. I have to see it. There's a reason I was named Thomas, Ira. I have to see it. I totally agree with you. If that's true, this can get really fun. Because I, I think that defensive front, those three guys up front are, are athletic enough to make a lot of those things that Tony White does possible and explosive, but a surprise. Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say real quick on that, uh, the one reason I would be inclined to believe him because we don't know Tony White. I mean, we've, we've been covering him for eight months. We've talked to him in group settings mostly. I've talked to him a couple of times, one-on-one, but very limited. Um, so we don't know how he treats things, but I will say this. Guy's been pretty blunt about a lot of other positions. He's been pretty blunt about guys on the defensive line. He's been blunt about guys in the secondary. He has talked this linebacker core up pretty consistently. So I think maybe it's legit, just based just based on that. I mean, why would he, why would he pull punches with them and not anybody else? So we'll see.
That's a fair point. He has, he is refreshingly blunt. I think both of these coordinators are in their own way, but they, they both are. Brett says in the chat, and I'll get to the point about the offense in a second. Ira says it better than me. I have confidence in the 3-3-5. I have confidence in Tony teaching it. I'm concerned about them having the athletes in 2025 to run this defense. Well, there's one thing that can be said about this situation, Ira. It is not foreign to Tony, to Tony White. He has been in this place in his career. Syracuse, there were times that obviously that they, they would put impressive performances on the field, but it's not like their recruiting classes were top 20 or top 15 in the country. Nebraska, a couple of very good players, a couple of future NFL players, but it's not on the level of Ohio State who they were taking on in the conference or that Colorado offense. Like there, he has been in this moment where he is leading less athletically gifted players onto the field against a superior opponent from an athletic standpoint. So this isn't anything new for him. It should be something that even though the, the hats changed, if he's wearing a hat on Saturday and the shirt, it's the same old, same old for him.
No, that's a great point. And, and really the, the foundation of the 3-3-5 defense, his defense that he learned from Rocky Long is built to kind of compensate for not having elite defensive linemen and not having just physical freaks across your defense. Like it, you know, Mickey Andrews might've come up with a, with a sophisticated funky defense if he didn't have the studs across the defense that he had. Like he, he had elite athletes at corner and at linebacker and at defensive end. It was like, go get them, guys. Well, I mean, you didn't have to come up with a funky defense. Well, they've done that. So yeah, theoretically, this is why they've done it to, to compensate for that. And he, you know, one of the comments that Tony said, and it was not specific, I'm not going to say who it was because it wasn't a formal interview, but I was talking about a certain player that maybe hadn't shown much in the past. And he said, well, in the way we run our defense, he doesn't need to have that measurable, whatever that measurable was. I'm not going to say what it is, but it was, you know, in, because of the way we play, we don't have to have the prototypical length or the prototypical speed, maybe that other teams would. So that's interesting, man. Again, I'm, I'm curious. I'm not a, not doubting Thomas like Tom Lang probably, but no, I am, I am curious how this actually works because I, you know, you see some of the deficiencies in overall talent.
One thing that stood out to me and I was surprised about, I'm looking at the offensive line right now. We expected to see Jacob Rizzi's name, if not in bold as a starter or an or category to be significant. And, and he was. So, and I really, I give us credit, Ira, on the chant. I think we nailed 95 to 98% of the, the depth chart discussion ahead of the reality of the release. So good on us. But one thing that I definitely got wrong is when Herb Hand was speaking last week and he said that he thinks that one of the starting quality guards could be the primary backup tackle. I thought that was Jacob Rizzi all the way. Looking at this too deep, apparently the guy he was speaking of was Adrian Medley because you see at right tackle underneath Micah Pettis is Adrian Medley and not Jacob Rizzi, which means to me, Ira, could it be that Adrian Medley is your third tackle amongst your, your starting offensive line rotation? He goes six, seven down the line. I know Lucas Simmons has slotted in at backup left tackle, but I feel like he was speaking on Adrian Medley last week. Now that we have this evidence and maybe Medley is, is your third guy in the rotation at tackle.
No, I think you're right. And I, and I believe he played tackle earlier in his career. I may be wrong on that. Listen, Adrian Medley's played a lot of college football and he's been, he was there before Gus Malzahn and Herb Hand showed up. He's been there for a long time. This is his seventh year of college football. So I have to go back and double check on PFF, but I think he may have played some tackle before. And yeah, no, I think it's a, and you see it, when you see it on paper, I think you really understand where, why Herb Hand was so reticent last week to talk about a starting five and why he wasn't really good about giving a clear picture, which we all wondered about. You and Jeff talked about it on the JCS. Corey Naslon talked about it. I think we talked about it in headlines. Like, what does that mean? Is he, is he ultra concerned? Or what's the deal here? And I think when you see it in, on print, you start to understand it that it's, 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 it's almost like a jigsaw puzzle in the sense that it's not going to be just replacing. If somebody goes down, if you have to make it, if somebody at the right tackle has an issue and has to come out of the game, it's not going to be as simple as, okay, his backup runs out there. It may be moving this piece there, this piece there. And, and, and now I also wonder about like, again, Jacob Rizzi's in the running at those two spots at guard. Does it make more sense to have him start? And then if something happens to this guard, he has to switch over or to keep him on the bench and be available. I, you know, I don't know how they're going to play all that, but they clearly would love to have eight or nine offensive linemen for the top eight, nine spots. It seems like they have six to maybe seven, six and a half. And so they're going to be playing this game all season as long as they can of how it all fits together best.
Do want to bring up this comment from Spartanol71 who says, Javen Boggs starting is awesome. A true freshman that can make an immediate impact. Ira, I described it earlier today as kind of a wire to wire true freshman calendar year for Javen Boggs. He was mentioned right out the gate. And I'm not talking about the signing day ceremonies where everybody talked, you know, Mike Norvell speaks on the players that came in. From spring camp to this point, it almost seems expected that Javen Boggs as a true freshman was going to get a nod like this. That doesn't happen around here very often. That doesn't happen in general very often. Any whispers on, on the impact you've heard about Javen Boggs and, and camps and practices? And is it fair to expect a significant season out of this true freshman?
Yeah, man. And, and you know, it's funny, and I'll give credit to Dominic Robinson, our lead football analyst. And this was an off the record conversation, but I don't think he's, when you're right, nobody's going to be mad when, when people bring it up later. But, you know, he texted, I think he texted us both back very early on when, when Deuce got here, that D Rob had taken some of the receivers out to run routes. And that day, I remember him texting and saying, Javen Boggs is the real thing. And at the time we're like, well, what does that mean? And he, at the time said, he goes, I think he may end up being the number three receiver. And it's like, wow, really? And then you get into spring and then the way people talked about him, what we saw about him at the one scrimmage we were able to go to, you're like, okay, I can see it now. This is a guy that goes, makes contested catches. He runs good routes. He's a physical player. He's not the, he's not a blazer, but he's a physical wide receiver. And then you get into preseason camp and you hear Deuce Robinson say he, he's going to end up being the best, one of the best players in college football, maybe the best receiver in college football. You hear the way Tommy Castellanos talks about him. They all call him a pro and a future pro. His position coach talks about him that way. Yeah, I have no doubts. Javen Boggs is, is the real deal. That, that's not, there's not going to be a question about whether or not that translates to me on game day. I think he, Squirrel White and Deuce Robinson give you a really good wide receiver core. And, and I'm excited to see what they, what they do.
We're going to give you a little bit of talk about what we expect from Florida State and Alabama. There's a question in the chat about Kalen DeBoer press conference. So we'll get to that in just a second, but we would be remiss. It's now only four days away, everybody. The War Champ meet and greet, home field happy hour at Corner Pocket Bar and Grill this Friday. That's right. This Friday. Say it again. You're going to get in your cars. You're going to get on flights. You're making your way to Tallahassee if you don't live here. It is for the can't miss kickoff tour from Home Field Apparel in partnership with Garnet and Gold and Modello. They're going to be a Corner Pocket Bar and Grill. We will be as well. Friday beginning at 4:00 PM, running till eight. We'll have a live Wake Up War Champ at 6:00 PM. We're going to have excellent raffle prizes like two tickets to the game itself, Florida State and Alabama. That ain't cheap. That'll be available for you. A chance to win tickets to the game as well as a home field and Garnet and Gold apparel setups. So if you want to get geared up, you don't have to go to the stores. You can just come to the CP on a Friday and get hooked up. It is going to be a coming apart at the seams atmosphere at the corner pocket in all the right ways. I think everybody's ready to put 2024 in the rearview, Ira, and that's probably the understatement of the night on War Champ TV. But it's only a few days away now and we're getting geared up for it.
I'm curious what the vibe is going to be because Corner Pocket can be a different experience on different nights. You know, it could be the kind of day where Gene and I were funneling and you were doing keg stands with Jeff. It could be that kind of day, or it could be the kind of day where you're just kind of chilling out, talking. I think Gene was talking today about making sure we have tables where we can sit and relax. And it's like, I don't know that we're going to be sitting down a whole lot, Gene. I think it's going to be a lot of standing and I think it's going to be, I, I think it's going to be a lot like the vibe in New Orleans the day before that game against LSU. We're down in Orlando. This is such a big game. Fan base is so hungry for this team to play and play better than it did last year, play well. And I think it's going to be awesome. I think it's going to be, I think the vibe in Tallahassee on Friday is going to be a little bit wild. Peter Collins may want to keep on the four o'clock side if he does come by.
Uh, yeah, maybe like three o'clock side, you know, just as people are finishing up those games of pool that they play in the afternoon. So I get in at that point, it's because you're going to have an Alabama contention there too. Don't forget about that. That's definitely going to be a part of the equation. And those Bama fans won't know what hit them as they arrive at the CP on a, on a Friday night. And remember everybody to check out Home Field Apparel. They're taking over the town this weekend. So if you can't make the game, for example, on Saturday, go to Corner Pocket. Home Field is hosting a watch party for the game, giving away $100 gift cards to Garnet and Gold during the proceedings. Look at all this beautiful gear from Home Field Apparel that is available at Garnet and Gold. These two folks are, these apparel providers are working together and we love our locally owned, Florida State owned friends at Garnet and Gold who are facilitating this particular relationship. This is, uh, it's going to be a fantastic Friday night and we cannot wait to share in the evening with all of you. Now, a question in the chat from Noel Sage who says, assuming that you all watched, what if anything did you take away from Kalen DeBoer's presser over the weekend? To me, he didn't seem too optimistic about his running back room. Ah, yes, Noel Sage.
Tom has some, Tom has some thoughts on this.
I have some thoughts on this because we put that out on the channel on Saturday. Thanks to our friends at Bama Online. He conducted the presser on Thursday, but we wanted to give everybody a chance to hear from the headband at Alabama, the guy that said yes to Alabama and Mike Norvell is still here. He did not sound pleased, Ira. I don't think we needed a big translator. It's about details. It's about accountability, consistency. To me, that sounds like pass protection. To me, that sounds like maybe the tracks that they're coached up to run at or run on against certain looks. Like details of the offense, they're concerned about two things, the health of the right guard, Jayden Roberts, who's been out for multiple weeks in concussion protocol. I don't know if they updated today, if that's.
They, they did, but basically they said it's still wait and see. So it's not, he is not back yet.
Okay. So, so they're looking at a backup guard starting on the right side, at least a preseason projected backup guard starting on the right side and a backup running back. And they ain't exactly thrilled about that position. So look, nobody comes out of camp or hardly ever does anybody come out of camp unscathed, but Alabama has a couple of glaring issues potentially on offense that are going to be things to watch for Florida State on Saturday defensively, Ira.
Yeah. And the concussion protocol is something that it's not a matter of just playing through it. And again, offensive lineman, we all know those guys can play through. I mean, anybody that remembers David Castillo back in the day, who was basically put together with Band-Aids and baling wire and somehow would play football games every week. And there's been a lot of guys like that, that can do that. Concussion protocol is not one of those things. You either pass it or you don't pass it. And as of today, it sounded like they were saying, he still is in that process. So hopefully he gets better. But you know, if you're not out of it yet on Monday, it seems like, yeah, there's a good chance they may see their backup offensive lineman. So good offensive line, their backup offensive line is probably plenty good. But, uh, you know, it is, it is a concern. And I do think, as you said, Kalen DeBoer seemed to be wearing that a little bit.
Well, and again, that was scrimmage one, that he suffered the concussion. So you're talking about a couple of weeks and not, not having live reps. So I think at best what Alabama is looking at right now at right guard would be a platoon with getting Roberts back into the fold. But no matter what, they've got multi-year players at left tackle and center, a Texas A&amp;M transfer at left guard, somebody they weren't counting on to be a starter potentially at right guard. And then right tackle, I know is a concern for a lot of the local beat heading into fall camp. And I don't know that those have been allayed. But you're right, Ira, I should caution and say, at the Alabama standard that they expect, these are their concerns. But maybe, just maybe, you know, they're still pretty darn good on the offensive line. As this week goes along, I'm curious to hear, what are things either on the Florida State side that you'll be mining for information? Mike Norvell speaks to the press tomorrow and Wednesday, or that you're curious to hear about when it comes to what Alabama brings to the table on Saturday? Because all this talk about, you know, is Mike Norvell going to do this or that? That goes away. Like we're actually in a game week, good sir.
Yeah, it's here. I mean, and you know, I think that they've handled, I think, I think the way Florida State has structured practices was pretty smart. And, you know, they, you had your three weeks of preseason camp. Last week, they treated it like a game week. And so it was, Monday was like a Monday game week practice. Tuesday was like a game week, Tuesday game week practice. Up until the point of Saturday where they did like a mock game inside of Deau Campbell Stadium and kind of went through the process of how do we, how do we enter the, from the tunnel? How do we, you know, change sides of the field? All the things that they, they go into a game. Then Sunday night, they had their, their practice for the younger players, which they do during the season. And then today, so it, I feel like, and I can't remember if they did it exactly like this in the past, but to me, it's going to feel like the season's already started. I feel like it, because they've done that, I don't feel like it's going to feel to the players like this is the season opener. It's the start of everything. And again, you think back to last year, the way camp was all weird because you had this trip to Ireland. Then you had to, you know, travel across the, you know, halfway around the world to go to play this game. And then you get into town. I don't know if you, if you remember the first night the team got into town, they forced the players to go out and just walk around the town because they were afraid that they would go back to their rooms and sleep. And then that would throw off their sleep schedules. So I mean, there's so many things. I'm not saying to excuse how they played last year. There were other reasons they didn't play well. But again, I think they've handled this well. So I think, man, right now, it's just a matter of seeing what it looks like, getting through these next few days healthy. I think they've accomplished what they wanted to accomplish in camp. Mike Norvell did say there's still a couple of position battles going on. We talked about the offensive guard spot. They still have to figure out, they have three guys competing for two spots. One of the safety positions, Edwin Joseph and KJ Kirkland are still battling it out there. I think everything else is pretty well resolved. And I think now it's just about, we actually get to see it on Saturday. But I feel like, man, they, they've done a good job of preparing this team the way they want to.
And we're going to document everything that happens this week from head to toe, X's and O's, like you can find with Dominic Robinson on the channel right now, which is a great breakdown of Tony White's multiple presentations on third down, the way he mixes things up based upon the opponent, to opponent previews. War Champ reports coming back for its usual run this year. That'll be on Thursday. We've got the chant, seminal headlines tomorrow at one o'clock, Wake Up War Champ all week. We've got the War Path on Friday, which will get you up to date on a humongous weekend of recruiting as Florida State hosts a premier opponent. And we've got, of course, our bread and butter, everything that comes up at warchant.com. Excellent coverage from Irish O'Fall, Corey Clark, Matt LaSere, Michael Langston. I might chip in, you never know for a feature here or there. But here it is. You can join right now, $1 for your first week and enjoy a complimentary year of the athletic included with your membership to warchant.com plus a flash bonus, everybody. First 100 subscribers, new subscribers to take advantage of this offer. We're also going to bonus you with money to Garnet and Gold. I believe it's $25 to Garnet and Gold. If it's 20, I apologize, but I think it's 25. We're not skipping around here. So think about that. It's a dollar for your first week, complimentary access to the athletic and also 25 dollars to Garnet and Gold. Ira, I mean, you know, this coverage was already, it should have been $50 a month as it was, but we're giving it away here on opening week to celebrate the opening game against Alabama.
Yeah. And these next few days, we're really getting to the kind of nitty gritty of the matchups, how each position, we'll have, Matt will have his matchup analysis piece. We have plenty of coverage about Florida State preparing for what they're going to see from Alabama. And then also the Alabama side, which is cool that we do have the access to all the Alabama coverage. So if you join War Champ, you can also go on the Alabama message boards, read what, it used to not be that way back in the old, when we were with Rivals back in the day. You can go on the Alabama boards and read what they're saying. And you can also obviously read all their coverage as well.
Tomorrow on the channel here, you got Wake Up War Champ, which will be released overnight. So you can get that in, in your feeds on War Champ TV or on your podcasts. Seminal Headlines coming your way at one o'clock. That comes after interviews. Mike Norvell and players speak at 11:30, 12-ish tomorrow. Seminal Headlines, one o'clock, The Jeff Cameron Show bonus hour at three. And I know Ira and I sat in a, in a meeting today, a staff meeting, and everybody's head was spinning from all the promotions we have. I got to wedge one more in here. This is for warchant.com subscribers. If you want to sign up, check this out, everybody. Our friends at Garnet and Gold coming through. Look at all that headgear. Those are all new hats from this year's line. So many different options for every taste, for every style. 30% off all headgear for warchant.com subscribers only. Your code will be in the tribal council tomorrow. It's tomorrow only. Get your season started right with excellent savings from Garnet and Gold. 30% off all hats, all headgear available for War Champ subscribers. Ira, anything you'd like to promote as?
Yeah. Well, I was just going to say real quick before we sign off, can we ban somebody in the chat?
Sure. Absolutely.
Matt, Matt LaSere too?
Oh, Matt LaSere too? Yeah, no problem. Here I thought you were being serious. I was like, what ungodly thing did I?
Malazie talking trash about the Red Sox being up on the O's, but he's in all caps. What is this?
Yeah, I don't know. You're too young to use all caps, Matt, by like 40, by 40 years. Now John is allowed to use all caps because he says, go Knolls. So there that is. We want to thank everybody behind the scenes tonight before we sign off. You know, obviously, Ira, you secured the interview, the one-on-one, and, and also a group effort with the interactive part of it with chairman of the board, Peter Collins. We appreciate the work to grab that for us here at War Champ TV. To producer Nick Carlisle, behind the scenes for helping us out with the first hour of the program tonight. We say thank you. And then obviously to State Farm Agent Russ Voorhees for the Monday smash. Thanks for letting us borrow a little bit of time earlier, Russ. But we appreciate your support as we head off into the first of 12 games during the season. Anything, Ira, that you'd like to deliver for closing remarks or promotions before we say? the first of 12 games during the season. Anything, Ira, that you'd like to deliver for closing remarks or promotions before we say?
Nope. We've done all the promoting we need to do. Let's go see some football later this week. I can't wait. We've got, again, plenty of coverage coming. Just can't wait for kickoff on Saturday.
Also remember the next promotion. Just kidding everybody. Have a great night. We'll see you next time right here on War Champ TV.